Yesterday with Bill 226 that was sent down to the third reading. We now are on substitute bill number 227-31 and I recognize the author Senator Guthers.
Thank you Madam Speaker and good morning colleagues. Good morning everybody. Madam Speaker, Bill 227 is the companion-
Motion to place in third reading first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 227 on third reading for discussion.
You may proceed Senator.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 227 is a companion bill to Bill 226 we discussed yesterday. And basically this bill will establish a task force on the Guam Product Seal under the auspices of the Office of the Lieutenant Governor of Guam. Madam Speaker, the reason that this task force is needed is to look at the current Guam Product Seal program in a more universal macro perspective. And to look at how we on Guam can promote more small businesses that produce products locally, not just consumable products but other products, not just perishable products but other products, in order to grow our small business community and at the same time promote the Guam brand through these products. The task force was in the bill placed under the auspices of the Lieutenant Governor because as you all know, under Guam law and the Organic Act, the Lieutenant Governor is responsible for protecting the great seal of the people of Guam and the island of Guam. And in trying to determine what would be the appropriate entity within the executive branch to oversee this task force, it was felt that that would be the right office. Since the Lieutenant Governor is already in charge of the Guam Seal, it might be something that he could do because of the experiences he's already fulfilling with reference to the Guam Seal. He could do the same thing by coordinating the task force for the Guam Product Seal program. The task force was very well supported at the public hearing that was held under the auspices of our good Chairman Chairman Pangolinan when this bill was held. And the makeup of the task force basically is a broad spectrum of the Guam community in general and incorporates key entities and key private organizations as well into its makeup. Basically, members of the legislature, the membership of the task force would include the Lieutenant Governor, of course, to serve as chairperson of the task force as the keeper of the official seal in Guam. It would also incorporate a representative from the Department of Revenue and Taxation who shall serve as the vice chair or co-chair of the task force. And the reason for this is the, under current law, the Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation is responsible for all aspects of the Guam Product Seal in terms of the registration of individuals and the enforcement of the specificity of the law. The Director of Customs and Quarantine Agency of Guam, or his assigned representative, would also serve as a member because they also have a role in compliance and enforcement of the Guam Product Seal law. The President of the Department of Chamaro Affairs, or his assigned representative would be a member in order to provide insight into the uniqueness of the Guam brand and to help promote the importance of protecting Guam's cultural and heritage through the Guam Product Seal program. The General Manager of the Guam Visitors Bureau, or his or her representative, is going to be a member and they are there because they would be tasked with promoting the Guam brand in its entirety abroad as part of their visitor attraction program. The Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, or his or her representative, would be a member because of the various programs and opportunities that GITA provides to promote small business on the island. The President of the Mayor's Council, or his or her member representative, would be a member in order to represent the interests of the people of Guam and to promote the interests of the particular villages and uniqueness of the villages as part of this program. A representative of the Attorney General's Office, representing the Attorney General, would be a member, or the Attorney General could appoint himself or herself if so desired. And that would be so that the AG can help provide some guidance on intellectual property rights relative to the Guam brand. And two currently licensed holders of the Guam Product Seal Permit Program appointed by the Governor would also serve as members because they have experiences with the Guam Product Seal program now and could make some very valuable and helpful recommendations. We'd also have a member from the Chamber of Commerce as designated by the Chamber. As you know, the Chamber is a stakeholder that bridges the business community with issues affecting all consumers. And then we would have one at large resident from the island community appointed by the Governor, again, to promote public participation and input in government processes and operations regarding this program. There would be a counselor or representative of the Small Business Development Center of the School of Business and Public Administration at University of Guam. They are involved in trying to develop small businesses and particularly small businesses that produce products of all kinds, including perishable products on the island. And there'll also be a member, the Director is assigned representative of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. And the reason for that, Madam Speaker, is because they've had experiences in monitoring some products with respect to meeting federal standards for health and safety and to help ensure that the products that are both manufactured on Guam meet those criteria, as well as products that are brought into Guam that are intended to be available to our tourist visitors. So these, basically, Madam Speaker, would be the members of the task force. And the task force would be convened by the Lieutenant Governor pursuant to this act. And the task force could also invite additional public and private sector members to serve on subcommittees of the task force. And also, the Office of Lieutenant Governor would support the administrative needs for the task force meetings. The duties of the task force are specified on page seven, section 2205. The task force shall work collaboratively and create recommendations that will develop a comprehensive Guam Product Seal Permit Program with the overall goal of enhancing and better promoting products made in Guam. As you know, the program first started in the mid-eighties and has not been changed since then or updated and there are some needs to do that. The function of the task force shall include, but is not limited, to recommending policy and adoption of a comprehensive Guam Product Seal program that promotes the Guam brand in products manufactured in Guam or made in Guam. The task force shall address the following in its findings and recommendations. Create a mission statement and objective of the Guam Product Seal program. Provide the assignment of the administrative functions of Guam Product Seal program. In other words, which agency shall have the administrative oversight over the program? The Office of the Lieutenant Governor may decide to retain administrative functions of the program. Right now, it's housed at the Revenue Tax Department. Address intellectual property rights and concerns relative to the term Guam, Chamorro, or derivatives of either Guam or Chamorro. Develop a feasible program, funding and continuity plan, a budgetary proposal. Right now, Madam Speaker, there are no monies dedicated to revenue taxation for this plan or for the program. Evaluate the design of the current GPS label and make recommendations if necessary. Clearly mark the delineation and assignment of the compliance and enforcement responsibilities and authorities of respective regulatory and enforcement agencies relative to the program. This includes, by the way, Customs and Quarantine. I've met with them a number of times. They have some issues in being able to enforce the current laws because of some weakness in the language, one of which we dealt with yesterday during our discussions. And also, we need to identify how complaints would be received, who would receive complaints, how investigations could occur, and how the enforcement requirements could be overseen. Identify and record all Guam Product Seal holders and businesses that manufacture commodities for sale in the tourism industry. Identify incentives. Now, I think this is very important, Madam Speaker. Identify incentives and advantages that encourage participation in the program. We need to place some incentives to promote this program more and to get more people involved in the private sector and small businesses and cottage industries making products here in Guam. And what's missing are incentives. So we're asking the task force to look at the possibility of recommending incentives that the legislature may be able to convert into law to help with this program. Review the structure of fines and penalties to ensure maximum deterrence for violating the Guam Product Seal mandate. Visit issues such as asset forfeiture, costs for additional CQA, cost recovery, administrative destruction, storage, et cetera. These are some of the issues that Customs and Quarantine has brought to our attention that they're incurring costs with respect to the program. Any penalties, civil or criminal, for repeat offenders. Title and transfer of seized property not in compliance with the statute. When Customs does make some forfeitures and takes some property into custody because it doesn't meet current labeling requirements, either local or federal, of products coming from outside, they have a problem with reference to storage and also a problem with reference to disposal of these materials. So they need some kind of guidance, legal guidance, that would authorize them to make certain, take certain actions that they presently are not able to do. Make appropriate recommendations for legislation, and I think this, for you and I, this is probably the most important one, Senators, to make appropriate recommendations for legislation to improve the Guam Product Seal Permit Program. And the recommendations shall include the following. Address country of origin label concerns. As you know, we have an interim approach, which is in our Bill 226. Address the use of the word Guam and Chamorro and derivatives of. Develop minimum standards, including font size, location of product, origin of consumable goods sold in Guam. Develop retail partnership and community buy-in for Guam products. You know, this is something that has not been done. We would hope that GITA and GBB and other government entities, including the Department of Chamaro Affairs, could be involved in some of the promotion, in the buy-in for Guam products. Propose made in Guam incentives and programs and strengthen compliance and enforcement schedules and guidelines. And review the applicability of copyright and intellectual property infringement and trade violations. And the reason this is important, Madam Speaker, is because what has happened is some locally produced products are being copied in terms of their packaging and design and so forth. And there's a need to look at this and perhaps address this as part of the task force mission. And then formulate an updated version of the Guam Product Seal Permit Program generally. And the plan shall be submitted to the legislature, not more than 120 days. The original bill that we had proposed set 60 days, but based on the testimony at the public hearing chaired by Senator Pangolinan, requests were made to please extend the timeframe. So it was extended 120 days in this substitute bill from the date of enactment of this act. And also to execute fines for non-compliance with the Guam Product Seal mandates and accompanying administrative rules and regulations. So this would empower the Commission to help with that and hopefully Revenue Taxation to be able to help do some enforcement as well as Customs. Now, the meetings would be conducted, as I said, by Lieutenant Governor and no more than one monthly meeting, one meeting a month, as needed to discuss and assess program recommendations. And a simple majority of members of the council who are present and voting shall constitute a quorum. The reason we included the simple majority as the basis of a quorum was because if not all the task force members come, the task force can continue its work and its mission and still meet its mandate. And the effective date of this act, Madam Speaker, would take effect upon enactment to law and the first meeting of the task force would be called to order by the Lieutenant Governor no later than 20 days after enactment. So that, Madam Speaker, is generally the focus of the task force. And I like to recommend, also, we've included a sunset provision, which basically says that the task force shall remain in effect until the adoption of recommendations of the Guam Product Seal task force are approved by the legislature. However, the task force may be reconvened from time to time, subject to the call of the chairperson of the task force as being necessary. So that basically is the bill. It's a very simple bill. I think it's inclusive of all the different interest groups on the island that would like to participate and have expressed an interest in participating, including the Chamber of Commerce, Guam Product Seal holders, GITA, Revenue Taxation, Customs and Quarantine, the mayors, and citizens in general who feel that would be worthwhile to participate in the task force. Of course, headed by our able Lieutenant Governor, the keeper of the Guam Seal. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I urge my colleagues to support this bill. And I want to thank Senators Santabini, BJ Cruz, Roy Respecho, and Senator Palacios as cosponsors for co-sponsoring this bill and also for co-sponsoring Bill 226. Thank you.
You're welcome Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of Bill 227. I think anytime we have a group of stakeholders to guide processes and to ensure that the mission is actually being realized, it helps. It helps keeps us focused in what we're trying to do. I do suggest that because tourism is a major economic engine on our island and because it's going to continue to evolve and because, well, it addresses tourists, people coming to visit our island, we have other parts of the tourism industry that is growing, such as sports tourism, education tourism. Those are other aspects that are coming to our island, are now developing. And because it's going to be continuous and because it's going to be ongoing, I would suggest that the sunset provision be actually deleted and that this task force be able to have life continuously. We will be going on. The task force is charged with a lot of ongoing activities, very important issues that will be addressed. And I don't see why we would want to set a sunset provision. I believe we already have a timeline here about when we want, 120 days, that we actually want plans in place. But I would think that we would want to keep this body ongoing and continuous to know that we can continue to come back. This is what happened, this is not what's happening, and we just keep on going. So I offer that we delete section five.
On the motion, hearing no objections to delete section five, the sunset provision. So ordered. On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on it? Senator Guthers, you want to close or you want to send it down?
Well, I think I want to, first of all, thank my colleagues. I think that the great, the great motion. The only reason I insist that is because the board is, because this is from the President of the Governor, we have to be more, so I think you want to- We want to offer something that would add to that thinking, but I think she has a good point that this Commission, this task force probably would have to meet periodically, even if their work is completed, to review the progress. So, yes. Yeah. So thank you, Madam Speaker. I think Santabini wants to speak, Senator Santabini. I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
I'm sorry. You're right. I didn't see your hand either, but I will recognize you, Senator Santabini.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. During short break, I had spoken with the author of the bill, which I fully support. And just for point of inquiry regarding having the Lieutenant Governor serve as the chair, perhaps if I could request the author to explain perhaps whether, would it be more appropriate to have the GITA chair, excuse me, the GITA Director chair the committee or the task force versus the Lieutenant Governor? Because as I understand it, the Lieutenant Governor is in charge of the Guam Seal. And generally, under our GCA, the actual product seal is under GITA. So if I could ask the author to yield to the question.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, the reason we, again, the reason we identified as the Office of Lieutenant Governor as the appropriate office to really get this moving and to oversee it is because it has been terribly neglected by the departments and agencies of this government for years, including GITA. Including GITA. As a matter of fact, when I was putting this bill together and tried to contact these agencies, I was very shocked at how things were passed from one agency to another. None of them wanted to take responsibility. The only entity that took responsibility was Revenue Taxation. And their statements to me, and I think very sincerely, was, "Look, you know, we're trying our best, but we don't get any help. We're a lone wolf." So you know, this needs to be elevated to a higher level, to a level that basically has responsibility for the work of the executive branch of this government, to ensure that the mandates of this government for the executive branch are being undertaken and properly followed through with. So I think the Lieutenant Governor is a great starting point, simply because first, he is the keeper of the seal. And this is something related to the seal. This is Guam. We're talking about Guam. Guam's image, Guam's name, how to promote more products on the island that are made on Guam. And I think this would be a wonderful thing because now the administration is promoting different things. Department Labor, they're promoting higher local. Department of Agriculture, they're promoting bi-local. So now they can promote, I think, the Guam Product Seal and get this moving and coordinate all these departments and agencies under the control of the executive branch that has not done their job in the past. So that's really the reason, Senator Santabini. I'm very, I'm glad you asked me so I could say that for the record. We need someone with the stature of the Lieutenant Governor and the Office of the Lieutenant Governor to oversee this, to get this moving. Thank you very much.
Senator, are you satisfied with the answer? So one more time, just to make sure I don't miss anyone who would like to speak in the motion. There being none. So on the motion then to send Bill 227 to the third reading file without any objection. So ordered. Senator Guthers.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill number 236-31 in the third reading file and I'd like to briefly discuss it.
Any objections? So moved.
Thank you.
You may speak now, Speaker Wompatt.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the purpose of this bill, Bill 236, is to improve patient accessibility to healthcare providers through the retention and recruitment of physicians, of physicians, by encouraging eligible healthcare professionals to serve in shortage areas by providing financial support in the form of loan repayments if the participant serves on Guam. There is a significant shortage of physician specialists around the world, especially on the island of Guam. Access to medical specialists on the island is very limited and must be addressed. We recognize that the recruitment of medical specialists is hampered by the pay given to physicians. We recognize that given the government of Guam's current economic shortfall, the government cannot afford to pay close to the national average of medical specialists. The American College of Emergency Physicians reports that physician incomes are higher than most occupations in order to allow for the repayment of high-level debt. So the intent of this legislation is to offer other incentives that will attract residents and former residents of Guam who have left the island to pursue a medical degree, to come back home and serve our community. One incentive is to offer a medical school debt repayment program. The fact that there has been a steady increase, climbing 6% annually, in school tuition and expenses from medical students that have resulted in high levels of graduating student indebtedness, which leads medical students to find high-paying medical jobs that will assist in the repayment of their educational loans. It is the intent to offer a medical school debt repayment program for residents and former residents of Guam who are willing to practice in Guam. The Board, excuse me, the Board of Directors, excuse me, of the Guam Economic Development Authority shall promulgate the rules and regulations. There shall also, there shall also be established a physician recruitment and retention evaluation committee that shall annually review applications and conduct applicant interviews for the purpose of selecting credentialed and eligible healthcare professionals to participate in the program. The committee shall be composed of the following. The Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. The Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse. The Administrator of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority. A doctor selected by the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board. And a member selected through community at large by the committee. Now, the applicant must be an eligible, credentialed health professional and must have a degree in a healthcare program, have completed an approved graduate training program, and have a current and valid license to practice such health profession in Guam by the time of execution of the contract. The applicant also must not owe any form of service obligations for health professional service to the federal government, any state, or other entity unless that obligation will be completely satisfied prior to the beginning of service under this program. First priority shall be given to individuals who have resided in Guam for a period of not less than five consecutive years in such individual's lifetime. $300,000 to pay for eligible expenses and loan indebtedness incurred in medical education and training. The physician shall agree to actively participate or practice in Guam within three months immediately following acceptance of the program unless extended by the Board for extenuating circumstances for a term of two years for every $50,000 awarded. $50,000 awarded. The physician shall agree not to discriminate against patients based on ability to pay and must accept patients under the medically indigent program. There is then hereby established the Physician Education Debt Repayment Fund, $2 million from the Healthy Futures Fund, which shall be annually transferred to the Physician Education Debt Repayment Fund and any direct appropriations from any source by the legislature. So that is a summary of the bill. And if I may, I'd like to just make some minor amendments on page three, on line 10 and also on line 12, if we can put the Guam Board of Medical Examiners rather than exams.
Okay. The clarification is on line 10 and line 12 to change the word "medical exams" to "medical examiners." So it should read Guam Board of Medical Examiners. So it should read Guam Board of Medical Examiners on line 10 and Guam Board of Medical Examiners on line 12. Does everybody have that clarification? Any objections to the clarification? All right. Madam Speaker, your clarification is accepted.
Madam Chair, can I ask, Madam Speaker, can I ask for a short recess?
Yes, certainly. We'll take a real short recess.
Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, would you like to go to the next bill and come back to this after that?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Yes, can we just set it aside and we'll move on to the next bill?
Yes, we'll come back to this, senators, as soon as we receive the information we're awaiting, and we'll ask the speaker to resume her seat up here.
They don't mind it, but we're going to give it to them. Name starts with T. Antonio Adat, on substitute bill Number 238.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion, move Bill 238-31 as substituted by the Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs Procurement, General Government Operations, and Public Broadcasting in the third reading file, please. I'd like to speak on the motion.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 238-31 is an act to amend Sections 4502D and to add a new 4504.1 and 4508 to Chapter 4 of our GCA relative to expanding whistleblower protection to all employees of the government of Guam. Madam Speaker, on Guam, as it is in all 50 states and other U.S. territories, the government must be of the people, by the people, and for the people. Public funds don't belong to elected officials, directors, or board members. They belong to the people. As I have focused on transparency in government with several laws that have authored this term, Bill 238 and several other bills are awaiting the action of this body. Continue to that trend. Transparency, however, cannot be complete if we continue to allow our laws to protect classified employees only in exposing fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption, in the use of public funds or criminal activity of public and civil servants. Substitute Bill 238 does two things: for those who would punish unclassified whistleblowers. First, it provides penalties ranging from a misdemeanor for the first offense and third-degree felony for subsequent offenses for those who retaliate against unclassified whistleblowers. Secondly, the bill protects employees from email witch hunts that may be used by supervisors to identify anonymous whistleblowers. I do have one amendment that I would like to add at the end of the bill, and it's on page...
It's a very long bill. You've got to find the page.
It's on 4508.
Forty-five? Wow.
No, Section 4508.
Page two?
Yes. Just give me a second here. And it will replace the last sentence of the end of Section 3 with the following: "If a warrantless search without probable cause is conducted of the messages and files in an employee's government of Guam email account, no information may be used against the employee in a civil or criminal proceeding. Any warrantless searches of employees, government of Guam email accounts, and for the purposes of such searches shall be reported to the Office of the Attorney General prior to conducting the search." I do have the amendment in writing.
I was going to say, that's a very long one.
Yeah, if I can just have a minute to have it circulated?
Yes. We'll take a brief recess. And that Senator Adat is still working on an amendment with legal counsel. So I recognize Senator Frank Blas, minority leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Senator Adat is continuing to work with the legal counsel and his staff to be able to tighten up that amendment, and in the interest of wanting to move forward with the rest of the session, if we can go ahead and...
Would you set it aside?
Set it aside and move on to the next one and then come back.
Thank you very much. Without any objections, so ordered. I would like to then recognize the vice speaker in Resolution 211.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I apologize for being late. I was at the Hilton attending a presentation by Public Health and Social Services and the Consortium of Advisors, and they just issued a document that they presented to the lieutenant governor that's entitled Guam Non-Communicable Disease Strategic Plan. And the reason why I thought it was imperative that I go to that before I came to session today was because I'd like to discuss Resolution 211, and I'd like to move that to the third reading file, and I'd like an opportunity to speak.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, this is just hot off the press, and I'd just like to read the section on tobacco. And I quote, "Tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of death and disability in the world. Smoking harms nearly every organ in the body, causes many diseases, and reduces the health smokers, health of smokers in general. The adverse effects from cigarette smoking accounts for nearly one of every five deaths each year in the United States. More deaths are caused each year by tobacco use than by all deaths from HIV, illegal drug use, alcohol use, motor vehicle injuries, suicides, and murders combined." I want to read that again, Madam Speaker, because I want the listening audience and my colleagues to please understand how I know you guys think that I've become the original nanny in my old age, but it really is imperative that everybody understand that tobacco, as it's stated here, "More deaths are caused each year by tobacco use than by all deaths from HIV, illegal drug use, alcohol use, motor vehicle injuries, suicides, and murders combined." It is imperative that we, as a community, address this, not just because of the toll on human life. Madam Speaker, we just went through the budget last year, and we had to appropriate some $50 million for the health insurance. It's imperative that we do something in the prevention area, and at the conference this morning, Dr. DeVere talked about four areas, well, actually six, but four that we can address ourselves. The first is tobacco use. The second is fat intake. The third is exercise. And the fourth is sugar intake. Fifth is heredity, which we can't control. And sixth is age, which we can deny, but we can't control. But the thing is, is tobacco control is absolutely necessary. I mean, we've got to figure out how to address that. She commended the legislature for our bravery last year in increasing the tax on tobacco, but felt that there was still more that needed to be done. The more that needed to be done, Madam Speaker, is something that has been worked on by the World Health Organization of the United Nations. In 2004, health professionals from all around the world gathered at WHO, and one of them was Dr. Otto from Palau, and they helped draft what is now known as the Framework Convention for Tobacco Control. And it was published, it was signed off by almost all the nations. Today, 2011, seven years later, 183 countries have signed, I mean, 173 countries have signed off on the convention, ratified it by their senates. There are 18 that have not signed. One of them is the United States. One-tenth of all of the, of all the nations in the United Nations still have not signed off on it, and one of them is the United States. As a result of the United States not signing on to it... As a result of the United States not signing on to it, Guam is not able to partake in some of the programs and some of the benefits of the FCTC. And so the reason why I've introduced this resolution is to ask the President of the United States and the United States Senate to do all that it can to ratify the FCTC in the very near future. Every country surrounding us has signed off, and they have ratified it. Palau has ratified it. FSMA has ratified it. The Philippines, China, Vietnam, everybody, including Iran, Afghanistan, and the United States still refuses to sign off on it. Madam Speaker, I'd like to read a letter that was sent to President Bush on March 4, And it reads as follows. "We right to urge you once again to send the Framework Convention on Tobacco Control to the United States Senate for immediate consideration and ratification. More than three years have passed since the United States signed the treaty in May 2004, but has not yet joined the 152 other countries who have become party to the first public health treaty negotiated with the backing of the World Health Organization and a major step forward in addressing a global epidemic. Tobacco is the number-one preventable cause of death in the world, causing the death of one in 10 adults worldwide or more than 5 million people every year. Nearly 100,000 children and adolescents become addicted to tobacco every day, facing a lifetime of disability and disease. Half the world's children breathe air polluted by tobacco smoke, elevating their risk for developing asthma, lung cancer, and cardiovascular disease. In the United States alone, every year tobacco claims the lives of more than four, every year, tobacco claims the lives of more than 438,000 Americans, more than the number of deaths caused by alcohol abuse or any other health risk, and costs more than $167 billion, B with a B, billion in both direct health costs and lost productivity. Addressing the tobacco epidemic is also essential to alleviating poverty in many developing nations. Tobacco consumption and production continues to grow, especially in developing countries where 80% of all tobacco-related deaths will occur in 2030. Many studies show that tobacco constitutes as much as a tenth of the total household expenses for some of the poorest households in the lowest countries, giving families less money to spend on food and education. The FCTC is a comprehensive and coordinated approach to tackling this global epidemic. To date, 168 countries have signed the treaty, including the United States, and 150 have ratified. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has signaled the agency's support for the treaty through an inter-agency memorandum of law and memorandum of policy. Despite the letters sent to you on November 30, 2004, and again on July 19, 2005, the treaty has not been sent to the Senate for ratification. No other consumer product is as dangerous or kills as many people as tobacco. The United States is already a leader in protecting the global health when it comes to fighting the scourge of tuberculosis, malaria, HIV/AIDS. However, it must be a leader in fighting the tobacco epidemic. The FCTC is a historic opportunity to protect current and future generations, both at home and abroad, from some of the devastating consequences of tobacco use. The United States must be up to the challenge of turning this opportunity into our reality. We urge you to submit the treaty to the United States Senate for ratification as soon as possible." One of the signers of that letter also signed the letter in 2005, and that person was none other than the junior senator from Illinois, Barack Obama. Three years into his administration, he has not sent this treaty, that he wrote a letter to President Bush as a freshman senator in March of 2005, and again as a candidate for president in 2008. And as president, he still has not done so, in spite of the fact that he's on record. He and the other senator from Illinois, Durbin, were the ones that authored this letter. It's embarrassing. I think it's imperative that we pass Resolution 211 at the earliest possible date. Remind him of his promise as a freshman senator and as a candidate, and remind him that he has one more year left of his term to make sure that he does what he's asked President Bush to do, and have the Senate ratify the WHO so that we here on Guam can take advantage of it, because we have to address the need to control tobacco consumption and take advantage of everything that the FCTC has as it relates to tobacco control. So, Madam Speaker, I know that this, I could go on for hours, but I won't. In the interest of trying to get all the other pieces of legislation through. But I just want to try to ask everybody in the body to please support me for unanimous passage of this resolution to remind the President of the United States that he should walk the walk, as he's talked the talk, as a senator, and send this to the Senate for immediate ratification. And, Madam Speaker, if there's be no objection, I'd ask that you join as my second co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Does anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Speaker Panglin, and you recognize.
Thank you, and this is my speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to speak very briefly on this and why I think this is so crucial to the effort of those members of our community who have been embattled with trying to swim upstream, almost, with regards to tobacco control here on Guam. And I wanted to just mention one statistic, which completely illustrates the need for this resolution and the need for the government of the United States to verify the FCTC agreement. It becomes a legally binding agreement to the signatories with regards to efforts on what we can do to control tobacco consumption by our community, most especially our young. And that statistic is that $28 million, but it's $28 million a day. That is how much the tobacco industry spends on marketing. $28 million a day. That is what everyone in our community is battling, that's what everyone in our nation is battling, when it comes to trying to stem the scourge of the health effects of the use of tobacco products, most especially among our young. And other, the World Health Organizations have developed strategies and programs to help these soldiers of health, I would call them, that take up this battle every single day in our community. And we can avail ourselves of some of those programs and expertise and information needed to combat $28 million a day. We're never going to outspend the tobacco companies, because there's just too much money at stake for them. But collective efforts like the FCTC is what is going to give our health soldiers, our health heroes, I call them, in this battle, it's what's going to give them some support. And it is imperative that this body support their efforts, who are out there every single day, with no arms and no resources, really, when you compare it to $28 million a day. And I think that this resolution will hopefully place once more before President Obama his promise and, you know, his position with regards to the need to ratify this agreement, and that he will lend his bully pulpit to the Senate to ratify this agreement so that we can provide some additional resources to our heroes who fight this battle every single day, with, you know, a dollar here and a dollar there backing them against $28 million a day. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and this is my speaker.
You're very welcome, Speaker Panglin. On the motion, recognize Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a simple amendment on page, I guess it's page two. Page two, line 16. Whereas six years later, the WHO FCTC, I think that there's a word that's missing there. So, it should say WHO FCTC has, still not.
On the amendment, no objections, so ordered. And is there anybody else who would like to speak on the resolution? Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
I just want to thank my colleagues and hope for their unanimous support. And on that, I'd like to move that it be placed on the voting floor.
On the motion to send Resolution Number 211-31 to the Third Reading File, without any objections, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker, can you cover up here?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to accept Bill 236-31 as substituted on the floor.
Hearing no objection.
Thank you. I'd like to now make a motion to place 236-31 then on the Third Reading File, and I'd like to just explain to our colleagues the changes.
Seeing no objection.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, you should all have a copy now of the substituted bill, and I'll just kind of walk you through it page by page then, because I earlier had given you a summary of what the bill is all about. On page two, the very first thing, of course, will be the deletion of the tax rebate, primarily because of the testimony provided by the Attorney General that feels that that would be considered inorganic. So, that was deleted. On page three, you'll notice then that there was a change then, which was originally coming out of, that GIDEA, as the board, would be overseeing this, but it has been moved now to the University of Guam, and the board then will be the Board of Regents. Correction on exam to examiners. Page four, that will follow through then, making the corrections that wherever it says GIDEA, it would be replaced now with the University of Guam Board of Regents, and then to add with the assistance of the Guam Financial, the University of Guam Financial Aid Office. The major part, I suppose, in this would be in page four, six, where they would submit now these annual reports to the legislature no later than 90 days after the end of each fiscal year, to include the applicants, their names of the applicants, the medical school which they have graduated from, the applicants who have appealed, and then also a list of those recipients, beginning and ending of the physician education debt repayment. On page five, on the evaluation committee, the committee there shall report to the board and shall provide the board its recommendations, and then the board shall have final approval of the recommendations of the committee, and may prescribe additional qualifications. The other was that it was just a doctor selected, but to clarify, to make it a medical doctor. And then on the program eligibility, is that it be based on the greatest medical need of the community, with the board having final approval, and that the list shall be updated every two years, and shall be posted on the websites of the Department of Public Health, Mental Health, Guam Memorial Hospital, and the university, and that the committee shall provide a written report and analysis on the basis of each physician's specialty priority listings recommended to the board, and shall post the report and an analysis also with the priority listing. On the applicant for number two, must, when earlier I had mentioned that not owe any form of service obligation to any other government, federal, state, or other entity, is that if the applicant then have been awarded, you know, funds from this particular chapter for the individual's approved graduate training program, then the individual shall not be eligible until he or she fulfills his or her service to, or a service obligation which will be owed to that other place. On page seven, that it is, the applicant residency is that first priority shall be given to individuals who have resided in Guam for a period of not less than, it's been increased then from five to 10 consecutive years, and, you're right, which matches the Protech awards, where anyone can apply, go off island, and come back to Guam. So, that will be consistent with what we currently have at the University of Guam. And that proof of residency now will be determined, rather than, before, we were thinking of the mayor's, but it'll be determined through providing the committee and the board any of the two following, which will be file income tax returns, and the other will be the applicant's income tax returns for a period of 10 consecutive years. So, everything that was five has then been increased to 10, and with the removal then of the mayor's office and them having to get notarized affidavit attesting to the fact that they are residents. On page eight, on the service obligation, is that the term of the contract shall not be less than two years, but no more than eight years, and, you know, we don't want this to go on, I guess, forever, and there has to be a certain amount. Participants shall receive an annual payment for, from the program in the amount of $25,000 only for the purpose of repaying the loans and for no other purposes. The contract shall automatically expire once the recipient ceases to have any student loan or debt. And, excuse me. And there's been some new information in that respect, because, and according, at least to a website, they're saying that the average medical student loan debt for the class of 2010, according to AMA, was about $158,000, and this is a website for that, in which, if any one of you are interested in verifying it. The physician who agrees into practice here in Guam then will practice for a term of not less than two years, but not more than eight years, with the amount $25,000 to be paid to the recipient for each year under the contract. And then, of course, still on page eight, number four, where the physician's license is suspended revoke, that the board have the authority to terminate the physician's participation in the program and require repayment. And on page nine, that the program, the amounts received under this act shall be subject to interest of the annual rate of 10%, retroactive to the date the initial award was received by the recipient. And then if you notice at the bottom, where it says the tax rebate, then that has been deleted. And then on page 10, again, then it's just cleaning up the rest of the bill. So, that then now, my colleagues, is the correct version, the substituted version of Bill 236. And I ask for your support for Bill 236. I think we all- I think we all realize and know that there is a shortage of doctors, not just here in Guam, but in the mainland, but it's far worse for us because we are very far, and our population, of course, are limited. So, we're able to get, you know, some doctors in terms who want to come out here and give back to our community, but those in specialties that are hard to get, those are the ones we're also trying to attract and bring back home. So, it's, this bill is designed to not only recruit, but to retain our physicians. Thank you very much. One more. Can I make an amendment then to include Speaker Panglinen as the third co-sponsor?
Hearing no objection. Anybody else, any other senator which to be heard on this motion, on the main motion? Senator Tony Edin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If I just, I have, the author will yield to a question. On the $2 million from the Healthy Futures Funds, what would be, what's going to be de-appropriated to actually fund this $2 million? Because I think it's, my understanding, that we already had all the future funds obligated.
Madam Speaker, do you yield?
Thank you for that question, and you're right, for this year, it has been already appropriated out. Usually then, what would happen is that, again, for the next fiscal year, that, you know, unless more money is actually come into the fund, then we would be able to make that appropriation. This is, we know then that this will probably be for the new fiscal year unless, of course, and I think maybe the best person that could really answer this in terms of the availability of the funds would be the Chairman on Finance. And if you don't mind, would you like for him to answer? Can then Vice, Mr. Speaker, can you ask the Chairman then on Finance and Budget? The question is, is from Senator, maybe you should do it and repeat your question.
The appropriation of $2 million from the Healthy Futures Funds, as I was mentioning to the author, that the fund has been already totally obligated. So, what would we be de-appropriating for this $2 million to be transferred into this, into this fund?
The fund would then be, it'll be whatever's the direct appropriation in the new budget cycle would be the initial transfer to the fund. So, if there's no appropriation to transfer into the fund, it'll be based on the governor's transfer authority. He can decide to take from his current transfer authority and transfer it into the fund. If he doesn't do that, then what would be transferred would be next fiscal year when we do the budget, we would do a direct appropriation to the fund. That's how I envision it operating.
So, the effective date of this transfer is supposed to be immediate upon enactment as opposed to with the FY 2013?
Yes. The way that the bill is written, that immediately the fund can receive a transfer from the governor that he decides to transfer into the fund. It can do, he can do that now if he identifies where he wants to transfer it to. And then if there's no transfer affected by the governor, then the next budget cycle, we would have to do it, we would do a direct appropriation, or set aside would be done in the request by the governor that $2 million from the Healthy Futures Fund would be transferred. So, that would take effect in the next budget cycle.
Is that clear, Senator Edin, or do you still wish to? I'll take a minute.
A minute recess, thank you.
Senator, are you satisfied with the answer you've been provided?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, the author has explained to me off the air on the appropriations.
Thank you very much. Are there any other -- Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in line with the concern and the question brought up by the senator from AFME here, I'm still a little bit concerned here with regards to the funding source that we're tapping into to provide this. And maybe to give me a clear picture, if the author or some, any other individual can yield to the question of, and recognizing that the way the language basically reads right now, where it states that $2 million from the Healthy Futures Fund shall be annually transferred, and any direct appropriations from any source by you listed to Guam. If this was to be enacted tomorrow, does this mean that there's going to be $2 million going to be transferred from the Healthy Futures Fund? Or that there's going to be another source? And if there's, if that, I mean, when would this take into effect?
Madam Speaker, do you yield?
Yes, thank you very much, for that question. As, you know, stated earlier, of course, and we all know what the budget process is, is one, of course, is that if additional monies come in, be above what originally was appropriated out, then the legislature can appropriate that. The other is that since already this budget has been passed and we've appropriated the monies, then it, another way to put money into this fund is that the governor has the transfer authority to do just that. Now, you know, it just depends on the priority, of course, of, you know, the executive branch who would be able to make this possible. If there are no monies, and of course, then we won't be able to appropriate it, and it could easily be addressed in the next fiscal year. Otherwise, the governor can make then a, set his priority, whether if he wants this to happen, if let's say there is a doctor right now that's available, and although it may not be up to the $2 million right away to do this, but one doctor is going to come back, it's $25,000 a year towards then the repayment of the debt. At least that's the best way in which I can answer it unless the chairman of finance can answer it better.
Well, I appreciate the answer that was brought. And I'm just trying to find a way to make the bill work here, and my concern is, and recognizing that it, you know, if this is the priority, if this is a priority, and if there is funding available, that the money can be transferred. My concern here is the way the language is written here, it says $2 million. If that be the case, and if concern is trying to get the money in, if we can get the money, is maybe we add in, on line 27, page, page nine on line 27, where it says $2 million before we put the words "up to."
Is that an amendment that you're proposing?
Yes, that is an amendment. Page 20, page nine, line 27.
On the Senator Blas, please restate your amendment.
Yeah, amendment is basically just the, at the start of that last sentence found on line 27 of page nine, it, the sentence will read "up to $2 million."
On the Blas amendment, who wishes to be heard?
My concern there, madam, and if I can go ahead and, the reason why I bring this up is this states $2 million. It has to be $2 million, it's $2 million from the Healthy Futures Fund. Now, you know, Mr. Chair, we just went through the budget process and everything, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that even through the budget process with regards to Healthy Futures Fund, there were a number of priorities that basically zeroed out that account. Now, the whole purpose of the Healthy Futures Fund is, again, it goes back to even your resolution, Mr. Chair, in as far as the tobacco control and everything. That's the funding source for this. If we are successful in that, we can assume and we can, and what our wishes, that that fund actually diminishes through the years. If that's going to happen, and this occurs, this ties up already $2 million. What about the other priorities?
On the Blas amendment, any Senator wishes to be heard? Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Up, okay, the amendment up to, to, up to $2 million. I just want to make sure, however, and that's why I want to put this on the record, that just so long as, you know, it's not going to be, because I'm saying like $25,000 is at least for the first year in which a doctor would return, that we're going to start their repayment. So, I'm, I just want to make sure at least on the record that it would not be only like $5,000 had to be put in, because then that would not be able, then, if we're going to already sign on these doctors to come back here, even one doctor, we must make sure then that at least the first year, and then we can address it, of course, in the next fiscal year, what the balance would be for the following year. It's just wanting to make sure that it's not less than at least, so say up to, I don't mind the "up to", because you're right, that would be the ceiling, but I don't know if we want to have a floor. But that's at least my comment. But I have no objection to the amendment.
Let's move on.
Page eight starts on line nine, and if you read the, what it says, "The physician shall agree to actively practice in Guam within three months immediately following acceptance of the program unless extended by the board for extenuating circumstances, for a term of not less than two years, but not more than eight years, with the amount of $25,000 to be paid to the recipient," and on and on. If, you know, going back to my English class, if you were to take out a lot of the adverbs and a lot of the, I'm a little concerned, I know what we're trying to say here, but I don't know if we're saying it. If you read this, it will read, "The physician shall agree to actively practice on Guam within three months for a period of not less than two years, or for a term of not less than two years, but not more than eight years." If you read that, it could basically, in as far as, in its ambiguity, it could mean that, okay, you have to practice here for not less than two years, but after eight years you got to leave. And I'm sure that's not what we're trying to say. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah. And I just want to make sure that that's, that, you know, unfortunately, it may be ambiguously interpreted, and I, and I know what the, what we're trying to say here. It's a Blas concern, and hopefully we can find an amendment to this.
We'll take a minute. Let's move on this bill. The Blas amendment's on the floor. Who wishes to speak? Senator Blas?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the time. The amendment actually now has been modified. I'd like to withdraw my previous amendment and bring in the new amendment in.
Please.
And that would be, actually, again, on page eight, starting on line nine, the subsection one would read, "The physician shall agree to actively practice in Guam within three months immediately following acceptance to the program unless extended by board for extenuating circumstances, period." And then, to add a new subsection two, which would state, "The physician shall agree to actively practice in Guam for a term of not less than two years, but not more than eight years in the program with the amount of $25,000 to be paid with the recipient for each year under contract."
Thank you very much. Please provide a copy of that to our clerk. And does anybody wish to speak on the Blas amendment? Hearing no objections, seeing no one. Thank you.
Last one, Mr. Speaker, with regards to a concern. This would go to the, then, it says subsection two, but now it would be actually a subsection three. It says, "The physician shall agree to not to discriminate against patients based on ability to pay and must accept patients under the medically indigent program." And I recognize and understand, and I know what we're trying to do here. My concern here, Mr. Speaker, is that what if this physician, per se, is now under a managed healthcare program, or under the auspices of another clinic, and then to require this of this individual, and actually go, and it may not be the requirement, or may not be the practice of the clinic that he or she is going to be working under, is this going to cause an issue? I just don't want to suspect that.
Madam Speaker, do you wish to address that? Do you yield?
Yes. When a doctor's going to apply, of course, to qualify here, that means a doctor will read all of the requirements, and that is one of the requirements, that he not, he or she does not discriminate against patients based on their ability to pay. The other thing that could, well, I don't know how this would work, of course, I'm not a doctor, but I know many of our doctors do have the privilege of practicing at the hospital. I don't know, maybe somebody else, maybe Senator Rodriguez, if he can help me answer this question, that if they, if they do that, then they do take, I know the hospital takes MIPs, but I've not considered that as part of the service provided to be able to deal, you know, with MIP patients. I guess that would have to be the board, if they want to provide any other rules or regulations on that, may make that recommendation to the legislature. But I would think that prior to the acceptance and entering into this contract, that that was, is one of the requirements, then they must, and whichever medical company they're going to participate in, that that would be a condition of employment.
Does that answer your question?
Unfortunately, you know, if that, you know, with regards to that answer, it severely limits and restricts the area, and, you know, where the, where this individual will be able to be employed. I think we're going to be pitting this, this new doctor against a prospective employer unless this new doctor decides he's going to open up his own clinic. I would understand with regards to, if there was language that was included earlier that would basically say that there would be a requirement that the individual would have to work in so many hours, or whatnot, to be able to provide these services under the public facilities. But to say that this physician, this new physician, this junior physician is now going to have to walk into a managed healthcare clinic and say, because I've got this grant, I've got to accept MIP patients. And again, I know what we're trying to do, and I, and I, you know, I like the idea of being able to have the individual do this, but it's going to pit this new physician against this prospective employer. And thus, it's going to severely limit and restrict, limit the amount of individuals who are going to be eligible for this program, and we may not have any of them.
Senator Pangolino, do you wish to speak?
To an amendment, everything, I, I, I'm just concerned. I know, I like the idea, but, you know, if this is going to be something, my, my suggestion, Mr. Speaker, with the, if we can't, is basically, you know, I don't want to do this, but the only way to be able to do this, to clean this up, is to strike this out, and then maybe work on it in the subsequent bill. But how is it going to work?
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. There's no amendment on the floor. Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. You know, I really understand, of course, the concern of our colleague, but one of the things that we've also learned here is that if we are, if the government is going to be providing these type of repayment, a debt repayment, then, you know, the government also appropriates money for MIPs, so medically indigent patients. And it's only incumbent then that if it is government monies paying for this, that it, that they, in return, by coming back to the island, giving back to the island as well, but one of the best ways in which they'll be able to assist the government, because it is a large amount that we appropriate every year, and I think it would just help give back as well to the government. So it's a win-win both for the patient and for the government, the people of Guam.
Thank you. Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion? Senator Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this attempt to try and provide assistance to doctors who are ready practicing, or ready to practice, versus doctors that are within the process of receiving their education necessary to practice, this is an attempt at this time to increase the attractiveness of coming to Guam after somebody is already practicing. I think what we've heard in some instances is that when a student leaves medical school, and he's now a doctor, that his first thoughts are, how am I going to pay back my 200, 300, if you're a super specialist, a $450,000 student loan? Because that's really the average doctor for maybe family practice or such, when he leaves medical school, according to the American Medical Association. leaves medical school, according to the American Medical Association. His average debt is about three, I mean, about $158,000. If you go into a residency program, then you probably add another 60,000 to 70,000, maybe another 100,000 to that. So you're now up to 260, 270,000. If you add a fellowship to that, you're adding another 100,000. So your debt as a doctor, brand-new, newly minted doctor, coming out ready to practice, would be, depending on your specialty, and if you go into a subspecialty or a fellowship, would be between 160 to 370, 400,000. That's his first thought is, "How am I going to pay that back? Where do I need to practice that will pay me enough to pay, first of all, pay back the student loan, and secondly, be able to survive and maybe raise a family?" And so that's the first thoughts that they have. And so we now have doctors who are able to practice, see patients, treat patients, and they're looking for where they can earn enough money to pay back their student loans. So what this bill does is it now puts Guam on the face of these doctors, in front of them, and saying, "If you come to Guam, you may be able to go to Chicago and earn 250,000. If you come to Guam, maybe you're going to earn 180,000. But in Chicago, you're going to have to pay regular taxes, state taxes, sales tax, and so forth. And so your 280 is going to go this far, and then your student loan comes in. If you come to Guam, you're going to earn 180,000. So that $100,000 gap between earning 280 and 180 on Guam is not going to look attractive to that doctor, because he's got to pay back his student loan. But then you factor in that there's no local income tax on Guam, so you add another 35,000 to that 185, so now you're almost at 200. So now you've got a $80,000 gap between what you would earn in Chicago and what you would earn on Guam, in terms of your expenses. And you add some other things that come back in. And then you say, "In addition to what you earn, what Guam will do is give you 25,000 towards your student loan payments." So now we've upped what that doctor would essentially be earning to now 225, 230,000. So now we're getting closer to what that doctor is going to earn in Chicago at 280 versus what he would be getting on Guam, given all the other considerations, and now we're competitive. Now that doctor would consider coming back to Guam, and we're talking about our own residents. We're talking about people who grew up on Guam and then went on to medical school. And so we're trying to attract those individuals who, when they look at, after leaving med school, saying, "180,000 in Guam, and I've got, you know, a $200,000 student loan, I can't make it. Either I can't make it because I want some things in life after dedicating my, you know, years of schooling to treating patients, but I still have other needs and wants." And we try to balance, then, what his needs are, which is pay back his student loan, what his wants are, which is, you know, "I want to be back home. I want to serve my people." But if it comes down to, "Can I pay back my obligations working on Guam and still be able to provide myself some kind of reward in my life, raising my family, providing for them to the comfort that I want to and the stature that I want them to? That's why I went to med school in addition to serving the people of Guam. I can now make that decision a little easier, knowing that I will have a program in Guam available to me to help me pay back my student loan, so I can take, actually take a lower salary here on Guam." And that's what this is meant to be. Is it the best solution that we have? Maybe not. But is it something that is going to increase the immediate ability of Guam to help attract these doctors to come back? I believe it will. Now, you know, it may not cost us $2 million a year, because we may not, you know, if it's $2 million a year, we're talking about, you know, 100 doctors coming back, because at 25,000 a year, that's 2.5 million. So we're not going to get back 100. So it's not going to cost us. I know that there's concern about $2 million. You know, at 25,000, that's, you know, 80 doctors a year. It won't be that. We'll get two, one, but it's going to be one more than what we would have been able to attract without any assistance for this program. The other thing that we need to take a look at and consider is what's in our process now to assist doctors or individuals who can't go to med school or, you know, are deterred from going to med school, because they can't even borrow the money to go to med school, but they have the ability to do that. And how do we help those? And that's something that I think we also need to take a look at. And it could conceivably be that if we're able to help them more at the front end, then we don't need a program like this. You know, we have to take a look at the fact that under the Pro-Tech Award, you know, the maximum award, I believe, is 25, 50,000, $30,000. But we know that the Pro-Tech Award, that a doctor's tuition a year is 60 to 70, $80,000. So he has to incur that 50. But if we upped the assistance for med school to maybe 50,000 or 60,000 a year and still require those individuals to come back under the same terms and conditions that we're doing in here, then we don't need that $25,000 subsidy at the back end. So this program could be for us, if we look at it, you know, maybe it's going to run for five years or eight years only, because we would then have that group of doctors here, ready to practice and meet the medical needs of our community. And if we took a look at our current support to existing students in med school, that if we could increase our support for them, then when those individuals graduate, because they accept the additional help at the front end, that they're going to come back anyway and they're going to come back with less student debt, so we don't need to subsidize the repayment of their student loans. So that's the other way we can look at, how do we put this program in place to meet immediate underserved needs of Guam by getting ready-to-practice doctors here, making a change in our Pro-Tech Award for current students in med school now, so that by the time we have these doctors that we recruited under an eight-year plan and they're terminated from the plan because they've fulfilled that obligation, in eight years, we have students that we have helped and lowered their student loan amount, because we increased our support while they're in school, they're ready to come back, we can phase out a program like this, and then these doctors are ready to come back here in five, six, seven years. With lower student rate, we don't need to subsidize the repayment, we did it upfront. We make it even easier for students today who want to go to med school and are deterred by the idea of facing a $270,000 debt. So we're going to have to take a look at what we can do for those that are in the pipeline, so to speak, versus those that are out of the pipeline and are prevented from considering Guam because of the large student debt that they have. So I don't see this program being eternal or long-term, because for me, frankly, I think the greater solution is help those that are in med school and are going to go to med school at the front end and tie them to the same requirement that they come back here. And we will then have a new crop of physicians coming back with lower student loans, which means we don't have to subsidize their repayment, because we've helped them at the beginning. So that's the way I see this program working. And it'll help us immediately recruit ready-to-practice doctors, ready to see patients, versus waiting for them to graduate from med school. Thank you very much, Senator Massey.
Thank you very much, Speaker Pangolino. Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion? Seeing no hands, Madam Speaker, on the motion to place the bill in the third reading file for voting. Seeing no objection. Senator Ada, do you want to do your resolution quickly? No, I have on the thing a resolution. Oh, Tony Ada, you want to finish off your bill then, and then we'll go to Tom before we break for lunch. I want...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just before we continued on, I just made an amendment which was already passed out, and it will go under section three, under line 26, after the word jurisdiction, and that's where the amendment will come in.
Everybody received a copy of the amendment? Do you wish to speak on your amendment? No? Okay. Senator Palacios on the amendment? Okay. Anybody wish to speak on the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? On the main motion, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 238. Mr. Speaker, the essence of the whistleblower statute is to encourage and to facilitate the exposure of government waste and government wrongdoing. And any employee who care about good government, Mr. Speaker, should be protected from retribution, particularly those who are temporary and contractual, who are most vulnerable to retaliation. And in order, of course, for the statute to mean, to be effective, that this bill, of course, will make it, will make the protection complete for whistleblowers, and it will strengthen the policy of encouraging employees, regardless of their status in government employment, to report these wastes and wrongdoing. And of course, I rise in support of this. And I ask the author to include me as the second co-sponsor of this bill. I like this bill, Mr. Speaker.
There being no objection to Senator Palacios being the second co-sponsor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Guthbert is the third. Any other senators wish to be heard on the main motion? Senator Ada to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just asked for my colleague's support in support of Bill 238, and I asked for it to be placed into the voting file.
Any objection to the motion? Senator Tom Ada on your resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess I have to move this resolution down to third reading.
Seeing no objection.
I'd like to just briefly discuss it. What Resolution Number 25431 does is really to obtain the legislature's affirmation, supporting the port's position that the modernization of the port should proceed forward in a balanced approach, as opposed to the approach that was recently being recommended by the Maritime Administration, wherein it recommends to focus all the financial resources solely on improvement of the waterfront. Just as a brief background, September 2009, the Port Modernization Plan was approved by the legislature. In that modernization plan, it lists projects that are to be performed in what is known as Phase One. And Phase One was further broken down as Phase One A and Phase One B. Phase One A funds had been identified. Phase One B, of course, those funding sources have yet to be identified. In September, the same month, September 2009, the port submitted its application for the Tiger Grant for an amount of $50 million, which is about 50% of the funds that were needed for Phase One. In February of 2010, unfortunately, the port received word that the Tiger application that it had submitted was denied. In September of 2010, subsequently, Congress approved DOD's proposal to transfer $50 million to the Department of Defense, basically as a replacement of the Tiger Grant that was denied. On December 2010, the $50 million of federal funds were deposited in the Port Enterprise Fund to be administered by the Maritime Administration to fund the port-approved projects. Now, I should note that the port, the project listing that was submitted in the Tiger Grant application was actually the same list of projects that Department of Defense had used to justify the transfer of $50 million of Department of Defense money over to the Department of Transportation, which will then ultimately be used for the port-modernization projects. The evolution of the modernization program, there's been extensive discussions on the protocol manual between the Maritime Administration and the port. And this is simply a manual that, I guess we could better use the term, everybody's more familiar with what we would call as the standard operating procedures. Certain things must happen before a project goes out to bid, certain reports will have to be made within certain periods of time, et cetera. Those discussions have been ongoing, and between the port and MARAD, and now they are on the verge of basically coming to a mutual agreement on that particular SOP. There's also been extensive discussions on the projects to be implemented. And a lot of these discussions have been kind of fluid, especially with the recent changes in the mood in Congress, what has happened in the region, in Japan, and so they've had to go back and kind of do some reprioritization. On August 9, 2011, the port came to the legislature to brief the legislature on the projects that the port and the Maritime Administration have finally come to an agreement on regarding projects to be undertaken using the $50 million that was provided by the Department of Defense. And the following projects would comprise what is referred to as the Balanced Approach to Port Development. And basically, it breaks down to about seven different projects. One would be the expansion of the break bulk yard. This would provide additional capacity. It will provide for structural repairs to berth F-5, and this addresses sustainability issues. It will provide for the construction of a new complex, gate complex. This addresses capacity issues, to be able to bring in the traffic of trucks that will be coming into the port to pull out containers and be able to get them out of the port in an efficient manner. It will also look at the development of the upgrades to utilities, infrastructure, which includes water, power, lighting, storm drains, et cetera, and these addresses sustainability issues. It will address upgrade of communications infrastructures, such as your terminal operating systems, your gate operating systems, and this addresses sustainability issues. There will also be addressed the expansion of container yard space, which will increase the footprint of the container yard by about six acres, and this addresses capacity issues. And finally, it will allow for the construction of security fencing to basically address sustainability issues. Now, in addition to that, of course, the port will be, through its borrowings, will then undertake the purchase of gantry cranes as required by public law 30-100, the purchase of container handling equipment. of container handling equipment, other waterfront maintenance and repairs, and other information systems. Now, the recent developments, then, is that, as I stated, on August 9, the port came in, and they said, here are the list of projects that we want to move on, at which mutual agreement has been reached between the port and the Maritime Administration. On October 5, approximately two months later, the Maritime Administration came back after having commissioned a study of the state of affairs, the condition of the wharves, and the study that they commissioned was a very, very conservative study, to the extent that basically said, oh, if we don't repair these things, these wharves are going to fall into the water. And so MARAT, then, based on that feedback, announced its intention to recommend to the Department of the Defense Inspector General that the entire $50 million that was provided earlier should be used to repair berth F5 and partial replacement of F4, approximately, basically dump in the entire $50 million to repair and replace 1,000 feet of wharf space. And in essence, what this would do is it would exhaust all the federal funds that are available, and nothing left for previously agreed-upon upland improvements. Of course, the problem with this is that the estimate, the engineering estimate, to perform the repairs that MARAT was recommending is going to cost between $55 million and $98 million. So we don't even have enough federal funds available to even complete that project, and that's $55 million on the low end. Now, some would say that, hey, the $50 million is Department of Defense money, and they should be able, they can do with it as they please. If they feel that they want to spend their $50 million repairing the wharf, then let them have at it. And to that, I say, yes, that is true, but this is our port. The funds that were justified using the project list that we had initially gone out for to also make upland improvements, and so we really need to maintain that position, that we want to continue to pursue the balanced approach to the port's development. On October 11, I, as the chairperson of the Legislative Committee on Transportation, transmitted my position letter, my position letter, to the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Port Authority, stating support for a balanced approach to port development. On October 11, the same day, the representatives of the Port Users Group, which is comprised of Matson, Horizon, Seabridge, Marianas Steamship, Marianas Express Line, Ambith Shipping, and Inchcape Shipping, transmitted their position letter to the chairman of the Board of Directors, supporting a balanced approach to port development. On October 19, the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Port Authority transmitted the board's position letter to the Secretary of Department of Transportation, supporting a balanced approach to port development. So in essence, then, what we have here is the Port Users Group, the operator of the port, the Port Authority of Guam, the chairman of the Transportation Committee have basically are united in the position that we really need to pursue a balanced approach to the development of the port, as opposed to the recommendation of the Maritime Administration that we should put all the resources into just fixing the waterfront. And now what we're looking for with Resolution 254 is to obtain, then, the support from the legislature that supports the positions that have previously been articulated regarding a balanced approach to port development. I would like to just close by saying that Resolution 254 affirms, would affirm the support of the Guam Legislature and adopt the position that, one, development of the port should be a balanced approach to development; secondly, development should implement capital improvements which strike a balance needed to achieve sustainable service life extension and enhance operations while staying within the current financial means. I would like to, just on that point there about service life extension, the port is painfully aware that the condition of the wharf does need attention, but given the limited financial resources that we have, its owner, agent, engineer, Parsons Brinkerhoff have done their own studies, and they acknowledge and affirm the fact that the wharves at our port need to be repaired. But they're also saying that we can extend the service life of the wharves by taking certain mitigation measures. There are certain engineering fixes that can be put in, which they estimate will cost about $12 million. $12 million that could extend the service life of the wharves anywhere from 10 to 20 years. That should give us sufficient time to be able, by that time, hopefully, we would see the cargo throughput increase that would give us, be able to generate more, the port would be able to generate more revenue, to go out and borrow money, to then pursue more permanent fixes. The third item that Resolution 254 will affirm is basically that planned and agreed-upon shovel-ready projects should be implemented to minimize erosion of buying power. In other words, they've already got, the port already has a list of projects it initially identified when it was developing its master plan, and they had already initiated the necessary environmental studies that was going to be needed to implement these projects. And we're basically saying, pursue those, and let's get moving with this project here. These are projects that are needed. And the longer we wait, the less the buying power that we have with whatever financial resources that we have because of inflation. Fourth, projects which do not have full funding identified, nor can it meet port-modernization and efficiency objectives, should not be considered. In other words, if we're seeing that a project is going to cost $55 million, anywhere between $55 and $98 million, and you only have $50 million, well, it's kind of like building a road to the middle of nowhere and then stopping because you don't have the full funding resources that you need to complete that project. And finally, Resolution 254 urges the port to step up its efforts to work with stakeholders to secure a more complete financial plan and timelines. I think it's going to have to take on a more aggressive step to go out and find more federal grants, take more aggressive steps to take a look at trying to get its possibly a public-private partnership to be able to achieve the developments that we would like to, that are needed down at the port, but we need to start taking a look at these options because we've got to start moving forward with the development of the port. So, Madam Speaker, I hope that my colleagues will support Resolution 254 so that we can unanimously put forth the position that we want a balanced approach to the development of the port, wherein we address issues at the wharf, and that we also address issues upland, such as the container yard, infrastructure, and whatnot. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. On the resolution, the motion for Resolution 254, I recognize Senator Frank Blas, Jr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support, in full support of actually Resolution 254-31, and I applaud the author and the other co-sponsors to this piece of legislation. You know, Madam Speaker, I like, you like me, and several other members that are in this legislature, remember back in those days when we were having those long, arduous discussions with regards to the port's master plan and Phase 1A, 1B, and 2, and so on and so forth? And I remember a number of the concerns that we had brought up there with regards to, first off, it was the funding source and the ability to be able to pay for these things, and making sure that the priorities were set based on, first, what our organic growth needs were, and that if there was going to be anything, I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, I remember correctly that if there was anything that has to do with the military buildup, that we had encouraged that funding for that would be contingent upon other grants and other programs, you know, that are related to the military buildup, to be able to fund these things. Then all of a sudden, several years have gone by, and now, after this body, through its process, a number of hearings that have taken place, not only so many years ago, but as recently, even as last night is concerned, is making sure that the monies that we get and the monies that we have to be accountable for go towards the growth and the development of a port facility that first identifies, that first takes care of our organic growth, our current needs and our organic growth needs. And then to have now discussions that say that, well, in order for the military buildup to move forward, these are other projects that need to be put in place. What happened to those discussions when we were having this discussion back in 2006 and 2007? What happened to their ability, you know, when we had the public hearing? The public hearing is not just for, you know, for the community at large or Joe Q. Public. The public hearing was for other entities who had some issues and concerns. Why wasn't those issues brought up back then? Why do we need to continue to say, despite all the efforts that this body has put in to work with not only the port management, but all the stakeholders of the port, for the local, for the local needs, for the communities with the port, why weren't they a part of that process? Why didn't they include themselves in as far as the discussion? Why is it that we're going to have to get away from what already has been decided on? I agree with this, with regards to this resolution, because what this provides is an affirmation that the process that we went through, that included everybody, that included a recognition, first off, that money is tight, and because money is tight, and although money is tight, there are certain improvements, there are certain enhancements, there are certain things that have to be taken care of, to be able to deal with our organic growth, and that if the port is going to be needed for something else other than our organic growth, we've got to look at those partners or those individuals that have to partner with us to be able to find some funding sources, not use the funding sources that we went out and got, that we have, to be able to accomplish and to accommodate what they need. So I encourage my colleagues to please support this resolution, because, again, it affirms the process that the modernization that the plan has already gone through, and it continues to go through, and continues to protect the needs that our civilian community has, not to take away and to recognize that, as a result of the growth, there's going to be, we're going to need more improvements to the port. We recognize that, but don't put that on the backs of our people. They had the opportunity to bring those things forward back then, why is it that, you know, why is it that all of a sudden now it becomes an issue? I'm asking, again, my colleagues to support this resolution. It, again, affirms the actions, and it does provide, you know, a statement with regards to the need for a balanced approach to making those improvements necessary for our port. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Blas. On the motion for resolution, Speaker Panglinian, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I guess maybe if I could just kind of encapsulate this resolution, and if I understand it correctly, what it basically says is that, as the retiring speaker and the author said, the legislature approved the port-modernization plan, and that was contingent, of course, on expenditures based on borrowing and grants. And the portion of the funding that's available now is the grant, and they're kind of equally divided, 50% grant, or $50 million grant, $50 million borrowing. So what we're saying is that regardless of where the source comes from, the first monies to be expended in the modernization of the port is what was approved by this body, which is what we need for our own organic growth and to service our own community. And a complication that occurred is that, once we started that process of moving forward and the first money came in, that there is an unanticipated requirement for the expenditure of the funds, and that is this wharf. And the debate is whether or not we're going to take all of the money for this, the money that came in and dedicate it to the wharf, or because that's what the federal government wants or have recommended to us as being what is required. And what we're requiring and what we're hoping to achieve is, really what we want is, what we approved as a legislature, basically minus $12 million to repair that unanticipated requirement of $12 million for the wharf, so that we can make the other improvements that we have already approved. And if that is my, a correct interpretation, then I'm in full support of this resolution. And again, the distinction of who owns the money doesn't matter. It's now been given to the government of Guam for the purpose of modernizing its port, and it is to meet our needs first, and not the needs of the military, you know, and so as a result of proceeding with the work, this unanticipated cost, which may us now have to channel whatever amelomo money is now, which is $12 million or $18 million, to stabilize the wharf and allow the additional development to occur, and then when other monies come in, we do the longer-term repair needed on the wharf, and then continue with the port-modernization plan. And I believe that that's correct, and if my belief is accurate, then I certainly stand in full support of this. We need to take care, and this legislative body says, that what is most important at this time is that we take care of our own organic growth to ensure that we support our commerce and our economic requirements and activity as supported by a modern port first, and then anything additional to what is required to service the needs of the military would come from the cargo growth of that military activity, or from additional money by the federal government. Or, in this case, because it's the federal money that came in upfront, then it would say that we could then use support of any additional borrowing for any additional activity required that may be now in tangent with improvements in the port for our own needs and to accommodate the additional growth in traffic at the port from the military. So it really is, you know, the military can't be an end-giver and say, we're going to give you this money, but we're going to take it back and just put it for what our needs are, what we believe the needs are that will most service us, and we're saying, no, we had a program, it's been approved by the body of the people of Guam, this is how we're going to proceed, we recognize that there's unanticipated requirement, and we will address that issue as we continue to then direct our growth to meet the needs of our civilian community first, and then we'll work with any additional activity required for improvements that would meet the requirements of supporting the additional economic activity and traffic coming through the port from the military economy. So thank you very much, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the motions... On the motions, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Senator Adet on the motion, and to send Resolution 254-31 to third reading file without any objections, so order it. It is 12 noon, we're going to recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon.